So that's Andrew, did you want to say anything about the value seen? You've said it in your letter.
Yeah, no, it's really going to be the core of what we do here in Chatham. So we're going to continue that, we'll continue talking about it. And it's really what we believe and it's what our expectations are. It's all about character. More to come on that.
Okay, then we'll move on to the approval of the present agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the present agenda? Anybody have any questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. So we're in our public comment section. This is the period of time where the public may comment on issues with the limit of three minutes per speaker. Anybody who wants to speak, public comment?
Good evening. My name is Judy Matthews and I was a teacher at Chatham High School for 24 years. I retired in 2018. I live in Old Chatham and my three children attended Chatham schools. I'm currently the chairperson of the Chatham Education Foundation and the treasurer of the Chatham Central Schools Retired Teachers. As you can see, I am closely connected to Chatham schools and care deeply about them. Chatham schools have a great reputation in this area and students graduate prepared for whatever path they choose. I'm speaking to you today as a representative of the Chatham Central Schools Retired Teachers. When I was teaching, I was the treasurer of the Chatham Central Schools Teachers Association. I served as lead building rep for a number of years and I was a member of the contract negotiating team for several contracts. During these negotiations, we often used the expression recruit, reward, retain. This is still applicable today. A school district is only as good as its staff. This includes all those who choose to work at school, but especially applies to its teachers. In order to have a well-performing school, great teachers are needed. Chatham must be able to recruit teachers in a time when fewer and fewer students are deciding to become teachers. Chatham must be able to reward the teachers that work with our students and help them to achieve their goals. Teachers in Chatham are dedicated and motivated to helping students grow, but teachers need to be rewarded for their hard work and many hours spent. Chatham must retain the valuable staff that they have trained. It is true that many teachers do this work because they are passionate about helping students learn, but they have families and needs of their own as well, which must be met. The cost of living in this area had increased and compensation must reflect this reality. Well-paid, well-treated teachers perform better. We are in the middle of a much-needed upgrade to our buildings. This is long overdue and will help our students grow and succeed. Now the next step should be taken. Chatham Central Schools must put their resources into recruiting, rewarding, and retaining great teachers. The best way to do this is to offer a competitive and enticing salary and benefits package. Our teachers deserve this, our students deserve this, and our community deserves this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beth.
Hello. My name is Wayne Cow. I'm your neighbor. I'm here because my school taxes are being used to exterminate children in Gaza, blow up schools, terminate teachers, abolish administrators. Fortunately, we have a student rep. Perhaps she can be given the UN report that came out Friday that I sent to all of the school board members, which lists of the murdered Palestinians murdered with my school taxes. That's why I'm here. Forty-four percent are children. So that's quite an achievement for this board. Quite an achievement. You guys should really stand up and take a bow. Forty-four percent children. Now, the number one age group that has been exterminated are children between five and nine. So we can just picture our little first graders through fourth grade. That is the largest number of people. It's not, it's not military-age young men. It's children. Okay, so why is this relevant to you? I've asked you to take your big red marker and cross out the teachers' retirement system until they divest from Boeing and Raytheon and General Dynamics and stop murdering children for your benefits, blowing up brown babies for your benefits. And I think you should share this UN report, since I sent it to all the board members, with the student rep. I think the student rep, if they're going to have value, has to take the community's concerns to the students. What can the students do? James Baldwin, maybe not known by all of you, but you can look him up. James Baldwin said, "We can take our kids off their buses. We can take our kids out of their schools." You guys have proved unable to grow a backbone, show any character, ethics. Instead, you go and you put this war propaganda at the head of your meetings about the mission statement of this board. Is your mission, is your, are you ethical child murderers? Is that what you're telling us? I think you're pasting a big Band-Aid over a huge wound. So you need to divest. You need to have meetings about divestment and you need to quit hiding behind your corporate shield as if you have no ethics, no character, and no conscience. Adios.
Is there anybody else on the list would like to speak? Okay. Has anyone on, are there any digital hands?
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Format issues.
Okay. Okay, so there's no visually hands. Okay. All right, then we will move on. Let's see. So now we're going to move on to board member comment. Does anybody have anything that they would like to speak about?
I have something. My high schooler came home with a Band-Aid on his arm today. And Sasha's smiling because she knows that was the blood drive. Yeah, and I think that that was just, it was really exciting to see him so engaged in that new life experience and, you know, making that contribution. So I'm really thankful that Chatham provided that opportunity.
Did you have anything, Andrew?
Just to say that I've had the opportunity to go to the Pops concert recently. It was absolutely wonderful. The fact that their kids in October could come that far was just great to see them. And so thank you to everybody who made that possible.
I was at that concert too and it was excellent. I thoroughly enjoyed it as well. But I didn't want to steal any of Sasha's thunder, so I wasn't going to talk too much about it. Okay, everybody, let's move on here. So now we're on the building and department reports. So we have Mr. Simon presenting for us today.
Hello, everyone. So I just want to start as the PowerPoint comes up. It's wonderful, he's so many of the retirees here. You know, when I started here 24 years ago, some of the people here are the ones who kind of showed me the ropes in Chatham and supported me coming, I started. So it's great to see them here today. Kind of have a little bit of a full circle feel to it for me as I'm entering my last year here, so it's a good thing. So thank you all for coming, towards the reasons you came for. So my presentation today, I think you got copies of it already. I just want to give you some of some of the things that are happening in special education and some of the challenges that are moving forward. I want to talk with the reading curriculum. One of the big pieces that come up, you got the iReady data, iReady data a couple of weeks ago from Mr. Court, and I kind of want to follow up on that a little bit. One of the big concerns is literacy, getting our youngest ones to read, to read fluently with good comprehension. A couple of years ago, we started the Orin Gillingham Reading Curriculum for our students with special needs. It's a big focus for our kids with reading disabilities, dyslexia in particular. So we started with a small group a couple of years ago. Last year was the first year that we really rolled it out in big numbers. We grouped the students based on skill sets. They move between, I wrote in here in the presentation, the typo that we had seven kids trained. It was actually seven teachers have been fully trained in Orin Gillingham at this point that are utilizing it. At the current moment, there's 44 special education students receiving Orin Gillingham Reading Curriculum. The input on that has been excellent from the teachers. Teachers love using it. It is a multi-sensory, sensory reading curriculum. It keeps the students engaged. It's something that we really want to move forward with. But there really are some next steps. We have to engage the students anecdotally. And the Orin Gillingham data has appeared to be really responding very well to the curriculum. The parents also, from reports, and the parents are happy with the children that are gains through this curriculum. It's not that they're reading off the grade level yet, but this is, they're teaching them the foundations for improved reading. But we really need to, two things I'd like to work with, Mr. Bordell with as during this year is really digging into the data on it. I want to look at the Orin Gillingham data and say, how is it comparing to other data measures we're collecting to children? The idea of this program is that we're working towards closing the gap to other children without reading disabilities. And a lot of it looks good, the data we have. But we really need to do a deep dive into that data to make sure that the children are making the gains that it looks like they're making. A lot was invested in, a lot of time every single day isn't invested in. No, plus the slide was not an inexpensive program to roll out either. So we want to make sure it's the program we want to continue with and move forward with the children. But that has been one of the big things at the elementary school for our special needs children these last couple of years. So it's important that we keep rolling with that. There's a slide in your presentation about continuum of services. I want to talk about this. I haven't, don't believe I have in the past with you, but I see this as a big challenge at current enrollment levels in Chatham over the next couple of years, which I'm going to have to focus on. When you look at the continuum of services, anytime you're providing services for our special needs children, we have to provide them in the least restricted environment. So we are trying to get the students with non-disabled peers as much as possible for the students and at the same time, meet their very specialized needs. In a small district like Chatham, that presents with some challenges for us. You know, you kind of see some of them on here. Some children just might be pulled out once a week for some speech services. They're just working on that R sound and that's all they need. It's very little. Other students don't need the classrooms at all. They're in a coteur classroom and don't need any pull-out services. That's very ideal. But as needs increase for students, there's more and more of that least restricted environment. We're pulling them out more to be with just kids with special needs. So that could be in one of the special reading classes. That could be in resource room class. It could be in Mrs. Rossi's high school classroom here in our life skills classroom. So it varies. And then there's stuff beyond that we can do for students beyond the list I gave you here. We have some students that have been a growing number lately, nothing else I'm going to talk to you about today, that are going out of district with their services. They're going to a Questar program or a private school program because their needs, it was determined that we could not provide an appropriate education for them either. There are some students we're looking at possibly bringing back next year, but to do that, we can have the services here to meet that appropriate education for those students. We're trying new classes here too. Mrs. Smith is here today. She has a new reading class at the high, at the middle school that we have not done before. It's a mixed grade level. Eight students, I believe, currently have, so eight kids in there who have significant reading difficulties at the middle school. And we determined that the regular direct consultant teacher model and resource model would not be enough to meet those students' needs. Myself, Brad, Mrs. Smith, they played stepped up. She uses her AIS, but she also has her special education certification. She was able to step in and teach this class. Her question is, how do we keep these classes going in the future? What do we do for our kids who don't quite fit into this continuum of services to still be able to meet their needs? Especially in some of these class grade levels where we have some public peers with significantly high levels of students with wide-ranging difficulties. So if you're looking at a large district with several thousand students, they can say, oh, we're going to do a little, we're going to have this type of classroom and this type and this type and this kids will fit in. We're trying to make that work in a small district. And we have a good range of services here, but as we move forward, it's something we're going to have to pay attention to. You can see through our school year comparison over the last few years, we were going down in our number of students with disabilities. And these numbers, the current year, 205 students with IEPs. This does include preschool, our preschool students, or there are currently 15 preschoolers with IEPs in that number. So we have, you know, 190 school-aged kids with IEPs. This is also including our homeschool students, which I'll touch base on a little more later. But our number of homeschool students with IEPs have also been going up. So that has been an increase in those families. More and more so are accessing the services. If you're homeschool, you still have a right to their special education services. So that's something we've been addressing this year. If you can flip over, Andrew, please, the next. It's kind of touching base on some of the reasons why our numbers are going up. We did, from last year, we had five additional. Last year, we had 10 kids with IEPs at the preschool level. This year, we have 15, so we increased that time. We have a school age increase of 11 students with IEPs. And part of that increase is that, I've hold the numbers, about some years, we have a lot of kids with IEPs at some grade levels, some much less. Our smallest cohort graduated last year with seven students graduated. That was our smallest and we didn't have many graduates last year. We had one age out, seven graduates, but it's a very small number compared to some of the other numbers. So we did decrease. We're also working with students who come and go. And that's been a challenge for our special education staff quite a bit. We had 27 students move into district with IEPs. We also lost 21. You know, it's, in my personal opinion, it's very tough to lose those 21. Those are children we don't want to see move. You know, it's like we invest a lot of time, energy to the success of the children. I want to see them graduate from Chatham, but people move for different reasons. When you have 27 move in, some of these students were already outplaced. So this is some of the reason why we had an increase of our outplaced students too, who were already outplaced when they came to us. We continue their programs. But that is, some of these children come in with varying needs and we don't get to know the kids, you know. We're still getting to know them. They're in all the grades. A lot of time and energy has to go into getting to know these kids and making sure they meet their needs. It's a reminder that when some kids come in from certain states, they have pretty lousy plans. We do a pretty good job. You know, some of these plans we look at, we have to decipher what were they getting with it? Not so much in New York, but some of the other states' kids come from horrendous sums they've received. So we're pulling a lot of catch-up and filling in holes for some of these kids. The other thing that's happening is student needs aren't going down, whether it's a COVID learning loss that's still in existence. But our needs of the students from speech and language is probably the biggest need that we're continuing to see. Our students are coming in with significant language needs. Our three speech and language teachers are working very, very hard to meet these needs. Their schedules are booked solid. I want to touch a little more on the speech too, those needs. A couple of years, a year or two ago, you approved that third speech and language pathologist because you brought up the preschool needs of the students. We had so many students. Well, very few districts can say 100% of their kids with preschool speech services are getting their needs met. We have every single student in Chatham right now with speech on their preschool IEPs getting the service. And from other districts that I'm speaking to about, that's few and far between because of the shortage. So it has been extremely successful in providing these preschool kids with interventions that hopefully it's not as significant when they hit school age. It has also helped greatly with the transition services. When they leave preschool, our kids who are now in kindergarten who brought speech through our preschool, the therapist knew them already. These kids jumped right in and got the services. And we have that contract with the county. We are getting reimbursed. We're getting approximately 3,500 or so a month back for the services for these preschools. So this helps to provide some reimbursement for us back and also meet the needs of our school age kids. So it's a big need, it's a big need moving forward with those speech needs. If you can just flip over. Here's our outplaced students by year. This is a, this is a sharp increase. We were going down again a little bit and we are up sharply. And this goes back to that continuum of services. We're up to 18. Some of these are students who moved in. Others are ones that we placed out, so it varies. But I've already had some conversations with Mrs. Reno here, with some of the special education teachers in our special classes, of which students we might be able to bring back. Some students, we don't have any, there's no students on that listing. It's okay, they're ready to go back, right in. No, they're going to need supports here. But when we're looking at meeting the kids' needs, I always prefer to meet them in their home district whenever possible. So this increase of numbers of taking is certainly bothering me a bit and we have to be able to get what we can do to get these kids back into district when possible. Like I said, it all comes down to free and appropriate public education. We need to make sure we can provide that appropriate education here for them when they're here. But this is something that's going to be addressed this spring and after when I meet with you again in March. Mr. Chuddy and I will have already discussed some of those numbers. We don't have a lot of the annual review meetings. So we should, I should be able to give you some more numbers on that, but I do my budget presentation to you in March. So here's just some future things that need to be worked on. This is kind of the stuff that I worry about, the stuff that keeps me up at night and stuff that excites me a little bit too. Our classification rates have inched up up to 205. It's a high number for a district our size. It happens to be addressed. We had an admin meeting today where Mr. Bordell was here. It was great. And one of the things that we're talking about is the MTSS system. What are we going to do? So getting these tiered interventions before students are identified at all, across all grade levels is very important. We have to do a lot and collect data on it to possibly meet these kids' needs before they have IEPs. Maybe they don't. Maybe we need to address the needs differently for some kids. And we really have to take a close look at that. And I really look forward to working with Mr. Bordell over the next few months to like get this ball rolling. Is it going to be done this year? Not even close. But you know, we need to start getting that movement. One of the things that worries me about the future needs is early intervention. This is before they come to us. So ours starts at age three, they say three to 21, but it's really two years, 10 months till this kid's 21 or 22 now. We have to meet the needs of the students. We have had students work up to 22 already in Chatham. But I was at a board, at a meeting with the Board of Health a few weeks ago and early intervention, the kids who have been identified needing early intervention, this is birth through age two, has increased sharply. There's also been a sharp decrease in the number of providers for early intervention. They spoke about close to half of the students who should be receiving early intervention services are not. No services for these kids. So lack of it is countywide, not a Chatham issue. This is a full county that kids are, is an increase in the needs of birth through two students with a reduction in the amount of providers to do it. So these are kids who we know have some significant needs coming up. So when they come to us at age three, they had not, will not have been received. So there's already going to be behind me when we get home for it. So that's something, you know, as we continue to look at using our speech services, that's a big thing. Another thing that I, we may need to look at too is whether we want to at some point in time expand that contract with the county. You know, right now, we have one student with seed services on her IP who's not getting it and it's November because there's not enough providers. Seed is a special education itinerant teacher. This is when a preschooler needs to work with a special education teacher and they're not going to an integrated or a special class setting to the story place or starting place. And it might be, you know, we might need to look at how we can provide special education services for those preschoolers, especially if more and more of our kids in our EPK program are qualifying for that services and they're not getting it. There might be some creative ways to increase those services. It's not a now thing, but it's, it's coming up as we like provide these preschool services for kids. I was saying before too, we got to look at maintaining our continuum of services and how do we maintain it? And how do we create new classrooms for the kids who need it? The way Mrs. Smith is running her classroom this year. It's how we prevent kids from like just missing those specific needs of students that is sometimes hard to do in a district our size because we have a certain number of staff and a certain number of spaces and a certain number of periods in a day. And it's just difficult to get it all in. We need to keep some ongoing data collection for program effectiveness. Like, okay, I can talk to you a lot about Orin Gillingham and how great it's been here, but we really need to dig into that data and say, okay, is this the right? Or there's not something I'm thinking of at the moment, but is there something better? You know, we can't just say, let's just do it because we've been doing. You know, it's a couple of years, it looks good. I think we need to take close looks at it moving forward. Things that I've been talking to principals a lot too is just general mental health needs of students too. That has been something that is impacting everyone. I don't think there's a teacher in this district who cannot talk about stories of students in their classrooms with mental health needs. That's impacting the work of all the students because of it. So we have to make sure that we're really continuing to work on trauma-informed care for our students to meet all of those mental health needs. It becomes really, we have a great staff here of mental health providers, who are social workers and counselors, psychologists. But really involved in everyone in this piece. So it's something that we have to keep working on. And then the other thing that's coming up is just planning for the future in general for the department. I've started talking to Mr. Port about this already. We have some plans already going to replace me. But you know, I really do think, I just want to give a little plug to everyone else here. It's, the foundation is there for it. We have a great team of special education teachers, related service providers, who, you know, includes the social worker psychologists, counselors, all of them. Speech, OTPT, special ed teachers are a great job. You know, I mean, because of the work they do, they make my life a whole lot easier and the foundation's there. And the biggest thing I can say about them is they care about the kids. They really care about the kids. So due to that caring, that they want the kids to succeed. Everything's going to keep moving forward really well. It's just going to be a lot of work. One more thing I can't, something to talk about them. I just have to put one more thing into. People are doing a great job as our transportation department. Look at the 18 students we have outplaced. That means runs to all over the place with some of our needy children. Our bus attendants do a great job with these children. Some of these children are on the bus a pretty long time, more than we would want them to be. And Josh has rerouted these kids so many times, trying to cut minutes here or there, whatever he can do to make it work. And it wouldn't work for that work of the transportation department. Thanks. Guys have questions?
I have a couple. I remember, it sounds like you were stating a win, so I just want to clarify. I remember a few years ago, you were discussing the challenges of screening our homeschool population. And I know that our numbers have gone down there a little bit, but it sounds like you've had some success besides.
Yes.
So is that, we're feeling good about what's going on there? Our screening's happening at a.
Yeah, we are. We currently have 11 families, 11 students, I should say, of homeschool students receiving special education services. That's an increase, getting up to 11. And it's only presented some challenges for our staff. For some of these homeschool students, it's pretty, I wouldn't say easy, but it fits in nicely with our system. They come into the building, they might join an Orin Gillingham reading class. They come in for a speech group, they come right in. The bigger challenges for our homeschool students are ones who are not allowed to enter our buildings since they're not fully immunized. So prior.
They're not immunized?
Prior, prior to COVID, New York state law has changed. That said, if children, they got rid of the religious exemption in New York state. And so you only needed a health exemption. And it's been hard for families to get some doctors, very strict in that health exemption. So without that health exemption, and you're not, don't have, you're not fully immunized with your normal, MMR, polio, all those, you're not allowed to come into the services. But yet those kids still have a legal right to their services. Thank you to the public library, to a lot of people to thank you. They open the doors early. For our staff, our speech and language pathologist OT are going to the public library, they're providing services for these kids there and they make it work. It creates some scheduling challenges for them. It's, our staff needs to move around, make sure they're there at the times these families can be there. We do our best to try to put those kids first in the schedule. I'm building our schedule now in the beginning of the year, but it's not always easy. I'm glad those 11 families are getting their services. You know, it's, kids are homeschooled, they also have needs too that need to be met. But it's an increasing number of kids. So maybe that's a good thing for the screening you're talking about.
Okay, so it sounds like that, that specific pain point from a few years ago is somewhat alleviated.
Yeah, we, at one point in time, I can remember many years where we had one or two homeschool kids getting services. Having 11 is the most I've ever seen.
11, yeah, 11. I mean, some of those kids are probably homeschooled. I mean, so, some of those kids are probably homeschooled, school because of their needs, at least a few of them, I would imagine.
Some of them have started in Chatham. They do a year or two, and then they choose to be homeschooled. A lot of these kids initially, all the, they're homeschool families. That's their belief in their family. So they're they're, all the other siblings are being homeschooled, but there's one student with special needs. So maybe they came in, they got the students up to a certain skill set, and they wanted to bring their fam, the child home so they can participate in all the other homeschool activities that are going on. Others, families right from coming in from preschool services, they just chose to continue. The majority right now, for a while we had some high school, we don't have any, the older kids. I'm also forgetting someone. It's mostly young, we're looking at like K one, two kids.
Is it still?
Yes, yep, yep. So it's still a Chatham IESP. It's a little different, it's a little lighter than the IP, an individualized education service plan. Because a lot of the curriculum is dependent on the parents, the homeschool family. But we be, we are only, instead of us being responsible for the, well, education of the child, we are only responsible for their special education needs. So the IP might just say, student's speech and language needs, and then the rest, parents' responsibility. Oh, it varies. I would need to look it up, but we have some kids coming in. I think the most might be, we have okay, so let me think about it. We have kids coming in for forty-five minutes a day, five days a week, Orin Gillingham reading, uh, plus counseling and speech services. So, you know, it could be three hours a week for a child, three, four hours a week.
All right, related screening question, this one's a question. I understand screening our uh, ELL transition students is particularly challenging. Things like speech, where it's not really clear their speech problem, or is there a language problem? How would you classify, just with our increase in ELL population, how would you classify our processes for screening right now? Are we
It's not an easy thing.
Generally effective?
Terry Bordell's gonna handle that now. You know, but no, no seriousness, it's a challenge for us. It's hard to tell. So you know, we rely a lot on data being collected by the teachers, from the input of the ENL teachers, but they're working with the children, some plus the AIS services, the students are reading. But once we get to that point where we really can't determine this is a language issue or a special education issue, we have to get a bilingual evaluation done.
We have in-house resources?
No, no. And so there's delays on this. So an example of this, so we're supposed to get an evaluation done within sixty minutes. Sixty days, by law, from the time we think. We had a consent come in in May. We went all over the place trying to find a bilingual evaluator. We finally found, this is for preschool, we finally found one. However, they told us, we can do it for you, but we're not gonna meet the sixty days. We have too much of a backlog. So rather than say, no, we went, we went beyond the sixty days, unfortunately, and so we finally had the meeting. But uh, we had to rely, and there's not a lot of bilingual evaluators around in the area. So it's been a struggle.
What's, is there a specific credential for that?
No, no, not sure. I haven't listened to it.
Well, I'm just thinking that needs are gonna be growing.
Yes, it is.
There's not enough now, there's gonna be even more not enough later.
Yep. New documentation. I got an email today or in the last week on new regulations for meeting uh, L students with special education needs that just came out from state ed in a few days. I haven't read it yet. And that's, there's, there's new guidance on that, I just, we just received.
Okay. I, I am, I'm just, you know, I'm just, my, my, my heart sings in a sad way a little bit when, when I know that some of these immigrant families, they don't really understand that there's even a special education process or system, and they can't understand our website, and they can't really, some of them can't talk.
We have all the registered, we have all of that in Spanish for them. Our frontline system that we use translates for a small fortune for us. We use a translator service, so when we're meeting with the students uh, and the families, we have a translator all the time. Is it ideal? No. Uh, I was actually looking at the website recently for the earbuds, where, you know, we have them, I can listen to hear them, the native language, and they can hear me.
Real-time ones?
The real-time ones. And they're not that expensive. They are really affordable. So I was really considering wanting to buy a few and test them out in some meetings. I just need to make sure they're well disinfectant.
There's um, some of them are very expensive, but uh
I was looking at the ones a couple hundred apiece.
They're a little slow. They'd be difficult in a teaching environment, but uh, the, the ones you want for a teaching environment are the real, like, are just a little bit more money.
Well, I figured for a CSC meeting, you know, it might, because the translator, especially if there's not a translator room, often the translator's over the phone. So it's less than perfect. You know, we have someone, you know, but it's being in the same room with a family helps a lot. And just be able to read facial expressions, body language is something.
Uh, that was it for me.
I'm just thinking that, you know, if they're giving us these new deadlines and these new windows, what is state ed doing to support, especially rural schools that are having difficulty finding, you know, like, um, like you were saying, the, the evaluator, you know, I mean, it's just, it's insane. So, so they give us these mandates, and then they're not giving us any of the supports to help manage.
Some of them come with, some of them come with funding.
Yeah, yeah. Be nice to them.
But it's really like, as I was just saying, like, it's heartbreaking for these families, and it's true. You know, for this family we met with recently, you know, we were, we were not in compliance. We went so much longer than we should have. I feel, I'm in there feeling terrible, you know, that, and yet the family was so appreciative of everything, I mean, so appreciative of everything the child is gonna be receiving. It's, they're tough.
And I love the way you're describing the way your team works. It, it seems like you guys are just like boots on the ground, making these adjustments on the fly that you have to make. And it's just, it's really, it's an amazing, impressive. Yeah, you guys are really impressive with what you're doing. I mean, he's just telling us this matter-of-factly, but I'm just listening to what you have to be doing to make this happen for these students, and we really appreciate that. It sounds like you guys are at capacity, and we'll just figure out what we can do and help us find out what these needs are. I mean, and we're almost gonna need to do it in a tiered way of like, all right, this is an absolute right now need, and then this is the one right behind that. I mean, just, just to try to deal with this growing. Um, and it's growing all the way, it's
Growing all the way. The other thing that we have to deal with, too, is how to manage the bubble years. You know, you get a year where, you know, okay, you have ten kids at this grade level, then all of a sudden the next grade level comes up, and there's eighteen students with an IP. It's like
Being able to forecast. Well, it's, it's impossible if you have them just moving in. I mean, if you see them coming up the ranks, you know what's coming, but then that's the
It's always a moving target.
That's uh, yeah, that's definitely
They're great families, too, but just be able to get to know them. It's a little high. A little high.
I just, I just wanted to say, you know, what, what Brian reported on, these are big changes coming to our community. And I know we've been talking about that. And, and what we're doing as a district, we're really trying to build our capacity to prepare for. Two years ago, we only had, just to remind everyone, we had eleven students, ELL students. Now we're close to forty, and it's growing regularly. So that's why, um, when we recreated Terry's position, um, that's a big piece of his position now. And we, we kind of recalculated what that position looked like. Um, and that ELL piece, and that MTSS piece are all big parts of it. We also added an ELL um, teacher leader as well, added to that. Um, so it's going to be, you know, we have to really be looking at our students and what the needs are, and we're going to have to make changes to that. And some of those are budget changes as well. Um, you know, we're gonna have to invest more in these programs to support our, our current students, because they look different than they did even five years ago. The other thing I just wanted to say, I just wanted to thank Brian. You know, I've worked with a lot of um, special ed directors, and I've never seen someone so involved with the students on a day-to-day basis and the families. You know, um, if a student is in crisis, Brian is one of the first people, you know, other than the, the psychologist typically working, but one of the first people that the team calls. Um, you know, he knows our families, he knows our students, and you're gonna be greatly missed, Brian. For those of you that don't know, Brian is retiring at the end of June. Um, so it's gonna be a huge, huge loss for the district, and I just want to thank you. Um, I've only been here a couple of months, and I can already see the impact you've made in this district and how you're gonna be really, really hard to replace. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's really nice to hear you saying, our team does.
And just, and just to speak on that, um, we've been talking about a transition plan. I think it's really important in this position that we have some overlap with Brian to get as much of his expertise as possible for this new person. So my plan is to pull through this position um, as of December first. We're working out um, the job description, because just like everything, there might be some tweaks to that as we go, because our students' needs are changing. Um, but I'm working with Brian on that, and we're hoping to get that posting out for December, have it out for a little bit, start the process, and hopefully have someone hired by early spring. Um, so we can have some overlap with them before we go. So that's the plan. Um, so look for that posting soon, and please spread the word, because we need a really great candidate to fill those big shoes. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
So now we're going to our student representatives' report.
I'm sorry I missed anything, because yesterday we didn't have school, and today was extremely busy with the blood drive, so I didn't have time to meet Mr. Wheat and go over what I was gonna talk about. But like we talked about today was the blood drive. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure on our numbers yet, but I'm almost positive that we've reached our goal of over forty donors, um, which is impressive for such a small school. And the majority of them were high schoolers and a couple of teachers that came out from other schools. Shakespeare is this weekend, Friday and Saturday. It's As You Like It. It's a comedy. I think it's gonna be great. I popped into a couple of the rehearsals, and it looks like it's coming together really nicely. Um, fall sports are over now. Winter sports, open gyms have started. I know there's meetings going on about those right now. And now that the blood drive is over, uh, student government is moving on to their next project, which is the Krispy Kreme fundraiser. Uh, that will be taking place December eighteenth, so that whole week, uh, or the week going up to it, just trying to sell a lot of donuts. On November fourth, I believe it was, I think it was the, I think it was the fourth, uh, was the Powderpuff football game. It was, it was fun. The seniors won, so, yeah, pretty awesome. Um, like we also talked about, there was the Pops concert. Uh, I got to go to that. It was awesome. All the students were in their costumes. There were some really impressive costumes, too. Coming up on November twenty-first is the seniors mock interview event, which is one of our first big projects for the, the senior group. Um, but we're doing a great job. We're all getting prepared for it. We're all, we're almost done. We're just gotta keep up with our practicing. Um, and I know I mentioned it a couple of meetings now, but there is the MED Teacher Helper Program. And that's been going on for a few weeks now, and it is amazing. It's so awesome to go to the MED and hang out with the kids for forty minutes or whatever, and I know everyone that's doing it is loving it. I think the kids really enjoy it, too. And after the meeting, I don't know if any of you guys were notified about this, but we do need a picture of everybody for the yearbook. So, hope you all came ready. Um, yeah, I don't know, we can figure that out after, but um, yeah, that's all I got.
Should we do it during break after executives, or before executive session, or do it now? Okay.
So isn't there a faculty basketball game coming up, too?
Yes, there is. Uh, what, Wednesday? That's tomorrow, yes. Six o'clock.
Very busy time.
I'm excited for that.
That should be fun. Oh, okay.
Are all the board members aware that Mr. Chuddy makes an appearance, too?
Yes. Okay.
I'm one of the coaches.
Very good.
He's gonna try.
I just want to say Powderpuff was really, it was a competitive game, and I really enjoyed watching that. Uh, everybody was really, they were trying, they were competitive.
I feel like we have a lot of, I mean, there's always a lot of athletic students, but a lot of aggressive athletic students, which made a good game.
And there was a big turnout, too.
Yeah, I was surprised. There was a lot of people watching.
This year, it was. Yeah. But, uh, yeah, a lot of great stuff. And I love the Shakespeare. That's like my favorite, one of my favorite things, too. Chatham has a lot of traditions and things that they do. It really, it's not all written down in one place, as it should be. You know, somebody coming, this is what we do. We should do that. But Sasha, thank you very much. That's right. The cross-country. Yes, yes, I saw that on Facebook. That was very good.
There's a story on Facebook about, it's pretty impressive.
Brianna, too.
Very impressive.
Yeah, that is very good. Yep.
I know that I wasn't down to speak. My name is Paula Fatazic, and I'm also a retired teacher from Chatham. But I had the honor today of reading essays uh, for the DAR scholarship. And Chatham should be extremely, extremely, extremely proud of the essay that Sasha wrote. It was fantastic.
Thank you for telling us that. We would never have known. You're hiding that under the radar there. Very good.
Did she get a letter of recommendation out of this? Did she get a letter of recommend, you got two? Okay.
Very good. Excellent, excellent. Oh, I did have a question. Uh, how long is that program going up to the MED? How long is that running for?
I think all year. Maybe, I don't know if it's like by semester thing, but as far as I'm, as I know, it's all year.
Now, is it the same group of students that go up to the MED, or do they rotate? Is there a list?
Yeah, so I know me and my sister both go every other day because of the way study halls fall. I want to say there's maybe fifteen kids going, and I don't know if there's like room for more kids to join. So as of right now, it's the consistent, every day, every other day, but I don't know what it's gonna look like.
Oh, I love that program. It's a great year. Thank you.
Okay, Andrew, up to superintendent for today. So first off, I want to welcome Terry Bordell. Today's Terry's first day with the district. Welcome back to Chatham, Terry. So we're, we're really thrilled to have him. Um, we had a great instructional um, team meeting um, this morning. We talked about so many great things and so many great goals, and, and we're gonna do some amazing things all together. Look forward to it. So I want to give everyone an athletics update specifically about our, um, our quest to, to really help support our, the future of Chatham football. So JB and I, I'm our athletic director, we met with two school districts this past week since our last meeting. Uh, we met with Ichabod Crane, Taconic Hills, had some great conversations with them. As I mentioned last time, the real focus of that was to let them know that we're interested in a fifty-fifty split in all ways. Um, and they understood that, um, and the, and both districts supported that. Um, they thought that would really be fair. Uh, one, one struggle that I heard from both districts are the uniforms, because both districts recently just bought new, um, new football uniforms. So that, that would be an issue, um, because we would have to purchase new ones, so we have a, a unified, um, one-team jersey. So things like that are gonna come up and, and could make some hardships. Um, so specifically Ichabod, we met with the administration. Um, they were very interested in our, in, in the future of our relationship. So currently, the Ichabod is putting together a presentation for their board tonight. Um, they have not really discussed, um, the, the merging relationship yet with their community or their board, so that's probably happening right now as we speak. Ichabod will get, will be getting back to us about moving forward after tonight's Board of Ed meeting to see if this is something that we would like to continue conversations on. So I'm eagerly waiting, um, from them, and hopefully we'll hear from them this week. Taconic is, is more at a beginning stage. Uh, they're still exploring, exploring the phase. You know, they, they need to work some things out as a district to see if it's even feasible for them. So we're still, again, not, not sure if Taconic is, is certainly interested. I also met with our football coaches. We presented our three options. And remember, those three options were to continue as is for another year, to see if we can make three teams, um, to not have a football program in Chatham, or to have a merge program. And it was, it was our, all of the football, um, coaches all agreed that a merger would be the answer for the future of Chatham football. So it was great to get that consistency with that group, and they are really in that support. They're in support of the model. They, of course, have a lot of questions. Um, but I also explained to them that we're looking for a fifty-fifty relationship, and they're full in support of that, you know, with a lot of detailed questions as we get closer. So next steps is, is waiting. I'm waiting to hear back from the other districts to see if we can move forward. Um, if we get interest out there, um, from one or two districts, you know, my next step would be to set up a, an athlete meeting, so I can be with all of our, our current um, football players in Chatham, and then also a parent slash community meeting, um, to really talk about, you know, getting their feedback as well. Then from there, um, we will present that, all that information, um, to the board. You know, either with one district or two districts of all that information. We'll get some numbers. Mike's gonna help us put together some preliminary numbers of what the cost would be and what, what change, what, what would have to be updated to our budget to, to do that as well. And then from there, we'll do that presentation and make a recommendation. So it's really, we're kind of the holding pattern, the waiting pattern to get, to have the districts get back. We are certainly We are certainly ahead of the other districts in these conversations. I think I like the idea that we've been proactive and you know, we are just waiting and seeing. So I'll be updating the board as I hear more. Any questions on football? Where we're at? I wanted to talk about our superintendent conference professional development that we had on election day last Tuesday. We can go today. The the focus of it was, was the future of education. We talked about, we talked about how, as we have been discussing, you know, at every board meeting, how our students and our world is rapidly changing and it's our responsibility to make sure we're preparing for the future that our students will be going into. We talked about how there's a change in top skills. You know, through some research, these are some of the 10 top skills that students need to have after graduation. Creative thinking, analytical thinking, technological literacy, curiosity and lifelong learning, resilience, flexibility, system thinking, AI and big data, motivation and self-awareness, talent management and customer service. Really the 10 trademarks that kids really need on Wednesday evening high school. We talked about also, I'm not going to go through this list with you all, but the top fastest growing jobs and the top and the 10 fastest declining jobs. I could just tell you the fastest growing jobs all have to do with AI and different technology. So what that brought us to is, is we started to dive into AI a little bit as a district. The district really hasn't. The teachers haven't had a lot of PD on it. People have been dabbling kind of amongst themselves on it. So we talked about what artificial intelligence is. We talked about why it's important in schools and how it could benefit us. So here are some examples I just want to share with the board. Personalized learning is huge. Really AI is a real, real good answer for special education and how you can accommodate and modify curriculum for students using AI. We can really improve assessments by really using AI. AI can actually help with critical thinking. It can come up with problems to different solutions, even better than us humans can sometimes. Accessibility, this is huge when it comes to text to speech and speech to text capabilities. Again, that modification piece. And then, and then ELL students. This type of technology is critical to ELL students. AI can help multilingual learners access educational content through language translation tools, which are all AI tools. So there's a lot of benefits of it. So we talked about phase one here in Chatham with AI is really making sure all of our teachers are familiar with it. They all know what it is. They all know how to use it and how using it better and it can be more efficient for educators. Teachers are asked to do a whole lot of different things now that they weren't asked to do. AI can help make some things a little bit easier and a little bit more effective and efficient for them. Phase two then was going to be student. You know, how are we going to prepare our students for AI and using it in the most appropriate way? And how we can prepare them to use it after. But phase one needs to be focused on the teachers first. So that's what, that's what that day was. It was all about professional development for the teachers and AI. What we decided to do as a district, there are many, many, many tools out there. So we just picked apart one tool. We focused on Google Gemini, which is in our Google Suite. So every single teacher has access to it and can use it because it's part of our suite. But I also gave them many other options that are out there and I asked teachers to kind of dabble in some of them and let us know what your needs are so we can look to use those. Then the rest of the day was really, you know, we gave them a little tutorial on Gemini, how to use Gemini. And then from there, the teachers joined different workshops. We had some ELL workshops. We had some other, you know, different workshops and they had some time to actually use AI to improve their instruction throughout the day. So I feel as if it was well received. We're sending a survey out on that. It's just the beginning of the journey. But it was, it seemed, the day seemed to go really well. Like I said, we have, we have some data coming back so we can look at that and how we can improve upon some of our PD that we're offering. And I could tell you at, the keynote speaker at Niskus was actually a robot, an AI robot, right? So it really is the future of where we're at. And I, and I would say for those of you that all went to, wouldn't you all agree that really AI was really the catalyst of the PD offerings? And that's what the focus was because that's where we're headed. And what I told the teachers, you know, we all can have, we all can have, you know, worries about it, which I do. You know, what it's, how it's changing things, but it's not going anywhere. So we need to embrace it. We need to learn how to use it and we need to work together to make sure our kids know how to do it as well. Any questions on the focus of PD the other day?
I have some questions about that.
Sure.
In the framing of educating our teachers on using these tools, was there any guidance on appropriate use? Or as an example, like cases where you would not use AI for X, Y or Z reason, like corporate compliance, something like that?
So, so what we talked about is actually Gemini? Is that, if you're talking age-appropriate this as part of it?
No, 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 no. You put, you put any information into those chat boxes.
Yep.
It's out the door and gone unless that platform has a contract in place with you that says they are not going to use it for training. So that would be a consideration for confidentiality. And then the other consideration, not so much the teachers, I don't think. But certainly as we start framing this for students, having a coherent policy of when it's appropriate to use those tools, when it's not, and making sure the teachers have the tools that they need to enforce that policy.
Sure.
So there's pretty good tools. Unfortunately, they're not free. Where you can link them into your Google Drive and as assignments are submitted, they're automatically scored for this was written by AI, this had a portion of AI, you know, like, and with pretty high confidence ratings.
Sure, sure.
But if we're, you know, we've, we've got policies on cheating, right? plagiarism. And I think that in some contexts, maybe there's a consideration there as well. So I'm just surfacing that as a, that's something that I think about a lot.
That is going to be something we're going to have to really dive into. Like I could even tell you Gemini is only for 18 and up. So you can't use it if you're under 18. You're not even, you know, so this is a tool that's only for teacher use. That's why we're not, I'm hoping technology advances and there's better tools out there for kids because right now they're not so great. There's not a lot of them even available for students under the age of 18. So that's why, you know, the goal is, is that we get teachers comfortable using it and understanding that we have to use it as a tool. And I'm hoping we can have more products out there that we can all look at and really find the best product out there. Because we have to start engaging our students in it as well. Because we know our students are using it. They have accounts. They're using it at home. But we are not yet, we don't have, you know, materials because there really is not a lot out there yet for schools on it. So that's not something kids will be using in school, but they certainly have access to it.
Well, maybe, maybe that's a question for a policy really.
Yeah, we could start looking into that and I don't, has anyone on the policy committee seen anything on it? Because I haven't seen anything from NISBA on it yet.
NISBA talks about it a lot, but I don't, I don't think.
So I bet you, I think we should reach out to them and see what they're. Because I haven't seen any guidance on it yet. It's very new for kids. Yeah, you're right. You certainly did talk about it.
The guidance is new for the old, the whole world.
The whole world, exactly.
Right? But you know, I'm in, I'm in cybersecurity and data governance and there is, there is a best practice set for this type of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, I think we should start that conversation to see, because I haven't seen anything.
I'll look.
Oh, any other questions on that topic? So the last thing is a very quick presentation on our priorities. So over the last two and a half months or so, I've had the privilege of really getting to listen to many stakeholders here in Chatham. You know, teachers, students, administrators, board members, community members. And I really got to listen to, you know, what people felt as if we needed to work on, right? So that was a big advantage of me as a new superintendent. Because these priorities were really based upon the feedback I've received from everybody. Our teacher leaders, our administrators. And I asked for some, some real, you know, what is it, what are the goals of the district? So what I was able to do is taking on everything that I've heard and I tried really hard to put them into some sort of priority based on the goal that the board. So these are the priorities we came up with. I'm looking for any feedback from, from any. And I know if any board members have anything we want to tweak, these are not completely set in stone yet, but I would like them to be after this meeting. Because I want to make sure we put it out there to the district. And then from there, I'm going to be really working on some SMART specific goals. So I can show the district, you know, how we're going to assess progress. So, so do you want me to read through them or do you all just want to take a look to kind of review them? And if anyone has any questions on any of these?
Can we make sure that this makes it into public after this?
I wasn't attached to it.
It's just not in public content if anyone wants to review.
Okay, yep, we can attach that to it. Can you make a note of that?
I have one question, but do you want questions or do you want?
Yeah, feedback.
So you just mentioned making SMART goals, not having thought in depth about each of these bullets. Are they, is it possible to SMART goal all of these bullets? So I don't know if they're all written that way.
Yeah, not, 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 some might be more challenging than others. I know that was a request of board made of how we're going to assess these. I know I did email these to the board. If you can look at it ahead of time. Anybody else have any other questions?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm.
That is one big item that I have found is a big need. I think if we can, a lot can come in place with a really focused program on that, more focused program. That would help our special education. That would also help students that are struggling and really hone in on that. And I'm really excited that Terry is on board because he's going to really take a leadership role on that piece of it. We're going to, we're going to look to see all the things that are working and look to see how, you know, what we need to do to really define that. And with that comes assessment, data analysts, a bunch of pieces to it.
So that we can find instruction that meets the New York State Learning Standards? Does our curriculum do that or what, what exactly is it saying to me?
There's probably situations where we've got curriculum that's a little bit out of alignment with what we need, I would imagine.
Yeah, you know, for the most part it does, but I think we need to really hone in on that a little deeper.
Okay.
You know, there's, there's, it does, but I think we can even do better with that. I think we need to make sure all the curriculum is specifically aligned to every single standard. And there's also been a change in standards and there constantly is. So I think that always has to be ongoing.
I think the only thing that I would say is, so I feel like bullet point one.
Under academic?
Uh, I'm sorry. Yes, under academic. I guess what I would be looking for more in this would be to see Bullet Point addressing more of like the three pathways of below, at and above grade level. That's usually how the, when we get our academic assessments presentation, which I realize we haven't had one yet this year, but in the past when we had them, that's how information was presented to us. It was like, here's who's at, or below grade level, here's at grade level, here's above grade level. And then I guess, like, what does that curriculum look like for each pathway? So like the MTSS would help support the below grade level, right? And then this one I see as, you know, the New York State Learning Standards would be the at grade level. That's like what you have to do, but how are the new challenging the ones who are also above grade level?
So, so the MTSS, there are three levels to that program and that's really what they define. Yeah, that's really the focus of, so there's tier one, tier two, tier three.
So it's the MTSS, like all?
Yeah, all students are tier one, right? So your tier one support would also be that challenging of students as well. So, so tier two means some support, tier three means, means more support. But tier one would be what every kid needs individually. So that would really, without saying it, that's what that means, right? So we would look at every single kid's, kid's specific need and we would target that. So, so like, for example, if a student is working on, you know, their tier one needs, that would be whatever their specific need is at the time. Some kids that would be, they need to be enriched.
You know, Rachel, I can't remember ever having an MTSS presentation.
I haven't either.
And I wonder if after, you know, towards the end of this year, after this process is completed, that might be just what the board needs.
Yeah. Because I wasn't familiar with.
And I found it's what the district needs too.
Okay.
It's what, it's a big need for the district. So that's why, you know, you can see that's priority number one. So we really have to kind of start at the beginning with that and really talk about what it is and how we best support that. Terry, anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, I, you know, today we started having conversations about that. And I think there's a lot of things happening here already that fit it perfectly. It's, but it's a different way, kind of to your question of looking at how you need, the needs of kids where they are. And I think just changing that focal point will take some time. But I think that's a great request to have a presentation on MTSS. Because it is still, it's, it is still new for a lot of districts, even though state has been encouraging this for a couple of years now. But it's still, change can happen slowly or leisurely depending on what the change is. But I think we, it is a need, as Andrew said, but I think in the conversations that, you know, they want to be here. I think we want to go to it and Brian said this earlier, folks I spoke with today, I mean, I mean, want to just focus on the kids first. And that means, I mean, come from that perspective, it'll be a, it'll be interesting.
And Terry, one thing that we should, just so you know and you're hearing, is that we also need to focus on challenging those students that need it. And that's really part of that tier one direction. Child is needing that, you know, that should come up in the assessment, just like a child that needs tier three. So yeah, so you know, really everyone, everyone is an MTSS teacher. They really are. And the tier one levels are done in the classroom. That's how the state is working on that.
This is not just a New York thing. I understand as well. So yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah.
So we'll, we'll give you like a really good presentation on that so you know exactly what that means. It's a pyramid, like tier one, tier three, smaller group at the top, tier two, center and tier three.
Certain see the word exceptional education law, which training. To that tier one, to that, it's good to make out. Yes, but those means could be. That's just a term you might see with MTSS to more.
Okay. You might have heard, you might have heard AIS. That's what it was. So it has three different themes throughout the past 20 years. AIS, RTI, MTSS. MTSS is more of the overarching, that's why they changed that, because it's more than just kids needing that extra support.
One other observation, and I, don't, don't take this as I like to see priorities changed because I think that I wouldn't want to pull things off the course. But I'm repeatedly struck by, this is not a Chatham problem, this is a K-12 education problem. The gap between college readiness and what's actually maybe workforce readiness. You know, we're, we're seeking guidance from our state who's asking universities and ultimately we're always like 20 years behind and not regionalized. Whereas there's resources, not great resources, but there are ways of understanding, you know, cutting that short and understanding what, what are the disruptions happening right now in the labor market? What are the jobs that are going to be available and what's available regionally or locally? And I just don't, I don't believe for a second that New York or, you know, our university system are, is the source for that information. I think they're, it's a source. But I, and I, I just, you know, I bring that up every year because I, you know, when we talk about academic goals, I always think, well, there's multiple reasons why we go to school, but workforce development is humongous. And I think, you know, just. And I think, you know, just in general in K-12, we're not doing as good of a job of bridging there as we, we could be. So I'd love to just see some attention to that.
Sure, sure. And that's really the goal, you know, maybe, should I add the word and/or college career readiness? Some kids are not, you know, on whatever track they're at, we need to make sure they're ready for whenever they leave this.
You know, well, the, the reason I brought it up is it's say, work with teacher leaders to identify, and I'm just thinking, well, our teacher leaders aren't the ones that are really experts in workforce development, you know? So if, but, you know, the verbiage doesn't matter as long as we're doing the thing.
No, exactly.
It's great.
This is what we asked for, definitely. Thank you very much. And I think part of it is also goes back to understanding terms. So we keep, we keep circling back to this, like, okay, we need a common understanding. We're all speaking different words, but if we can get a common understanding, we can all move forward together. And so what you just talked about right now, just educated a lot of us about, okay, now we, you're speaking, now we understand what you're talking about.
And it's not just academic, it's also behavioral MTSS. It's also used, so that's why it's kind of globally. So students with behavioral needs, mental health needs, also is on an MTSS scale, right? So it's, it's really kind of the new way we are looking at it, you know, as educators. We want to make sure everyone does this in Chatham too. You always think of the kid as a pyramid, right? How do we provide supports? And the supports that we give them should be different if they're tier three, which is more support tier two or tier one. So it's really not just reading and writing, reading and math anymore. There's many different pieces to it.
Well, then you also have to layer in what's happening with the Blue Ribbon Commission. Thank you for printing that out for me. When New York State's coming up with their portrait of graduate. So that's, you know, we, we're getting our act together, getting the band together and figuring this all out. But then we are also going to be hit with new, you know, things that we have to try to reach to. And so it's good that we're addressing this now.
Maybe just from a community perspective, when we post this, I assume this will go on a webpage. Maybe like a little star note or something, just saying like MTSS is like something, as a parent.
I can give a little.
I know everybody understands that in this industry, but that's not something that you know.
Definitely. Is there any other terminology like that in here that's a little, our little education jar?
Is this, is this going, I, I mean, I know that it should be in board minutes, but is this going on the website?
Yeah.
At this depth?
Where, when you click on the top.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that we need our security contractor's name on the website.
Well, I, I said, who's, who's helping us work on that? Either.
Oh, yes, you did. With our safety consultant.
On that one, I can just put a consultant, a safety consultant. Yeah, we can do that.
Does anybody else have any other comments, questions? Andrew, did you have anything else that you wanted to add? That was it? Okay. So it's up to, like, operational update.
Couple items tonight. First, we met with finance committee last Thursday. So went over the budget calendar similar pretty much as years past. This is my, I think 13th calendar that we've done. But I do want to personally thank Don and Nikki, our board members that are willing to sit on the committee with us. And Pat Julian, our treasurer, Andrew was there. And then we actually had two community members, so Dave LeVoe has been with me 13 years. Thrilled he's back, a lot of knowledge. And then Andrew Gilligan, you know, it was nice to see him want to intend to be a part of this and he's really excited to be a part of it. So I want to thank that committee. We'll do the reserve plan this month, get it adopted for December. That'll be, you know, a big reserve plan, but then really January, February, March, April is when we really. Next thing is, I want to thank the maintenance crew this fall season. So sports are done. I want to thank all the, congratulate all the athletes, every team, all the coaches and members and students that participated. It was wonderful. I got to see a lot of events and just being out there and trying to compete, you know, do your best, some had good years, some, some record winners, but everyone out there was wonderful to see. The grounds was challenging, we didn't have any rain, so we had to get water up when we could. I do want to do a special congratulations, girls soccer, section B finals, best year in 20 years, co-champs with Greenville for Petronas. So that was amazing run, especially moving up to the bigger classification. And then that Maddie Waring, I read that article, section B, not only did she win, but she won by I think a minute and a half, or it was amazing win. So that, that's truly incredible for a new kid to do that. I wish her the best of luck in states. Yeah, so that's, that's, that was wonderful. So we had some great successes, but like I said, I want to congratulate all the coaches and, and all the students that participated, you know, putting in the time and effort. So that was nice to see. And then capital project, quick update, still working, obviously, I don't know how much longer they're going to go, but you know, the weather's been good. So front entrance, they keep making some grounds, you know, I'd like to, I don't think we're going to have that final Chatham sign on yet, but they're going to get as much as they can done, done as possible. And then they might be finishing up in, in spring. The EFIS or the external insulation, we're just waiting on those boards so we can put up the insulation around the rest of the school. And then we can finish the roof, which I'd like to get done.
Before the snow?
Yeah, so I'd like, you know, that, that, those are, those are big things, but we're just waiting on those panels. And then once the panel's gone, we can do that. But one thing we did add with the change order is what we talked about doing the lights in the front. All those lights pretty much were not working properly and that was going to be a big project. So we are gonna, we're actually adding, I think, another six poles. I think we're gonna, I think it's nine or 11 poles versus whatever we had five or six. But they're working very hard to get that in because obviously it's, you know, it's very dark now. So, you know, we're doing what we can with the lighting, but then I'm thrilled with that electrical, getting the stuff in there, you know, putting poles in, we're going to get, we're going to get the lights going. That's a great project. It was something added on. Didn't know we had as many issues as we did until they looked at it. So, and that'll just look great, new poles and everything looks nice in the front. So I'm happy to see that. And I'll, I'll give you another update. We're going to have a meeting tomorrow on where we're going. SCI did come in and meet, architects did come in, our superintendent, which was nice. They wanted to meet him. We had a good meeting. And then we're going to be really moving, you know, a lot of things are going to go from pretty much January before the end of school to get everything ready because it's going to be a massive undertaking this summer. So we'll be working. So that's all I have on my report tonight.
Did they finish the bathroom in the high school?
Bathroom is almost done. The main thing is we, we're waiting on doors, actual doors that we can put in that can be lockable. And that's the big piece. So I'd like to get that, you know, done sooner rather than later because they do, bathrooms, you know, new bathrooms are wonderful. Be nice for the kids to be able to use those.
Those panels, they were back ordered or just having a hard time?
Just taking time to get those in. So that's the insulation, you know, that's where you see the wood above the weight stucco stuff. So we're going to have a lot more insulation. The nice thing is once the panels do come in though, they're easier to put up. It's not going to take forever to do that.
Is there a contingency plan if they don't turn out to be available?
Well, they're available, they're coming. And the thing is the roof, the roof is sealed, right? We've just got to get, I want the metal, it'll be better when it's sealed up for parts of the roof. So all the areas that they can do without those panels are done. It's just when, they have to wait till the insulation's on to actually firm up with the metal panels. But, you know, I said, really nice.
Roof is actually not, we get it, and that's more cosmetic, you know, on the outside. So they weren't 100% sure it would be done before winter, so they might not be done before winter.
Okay, but it's, it's not a major risk.
No.
Is that a new community member I heard about on finance?
Yes.
That's really exciting. So who recruited because?
Actually, Matt, you did. When, when we had the opening.
Okay.
Rachel filled it. We asked people if they were interested in joining the board and we had a couple of candidates in and so we reached out to him.
That's really great.
Afterwards, and he said, sure, I'll be on the committee. So it's, it's perfect.
It's a great, great ground to grow a new board member. But then of course we'll still be, you know, i- if, if, if that person comes on the board when there's an opening, we'll be short another community member in finance.
Well, then we'll find another one to recruit. I mean, that's absolutely, I mean, it's a great way to start. I mean, if you can't, you know, to get an idea of what's going on, the more you know before you join, the better.
Yes.
Is that it, Mike? Okay, great. All right, so we'll move on to the board committee reports. Public library, do we have a, what's our meeting? There's a stop.
There is, actually, we skipped over you.
I am sorry, Terry. We skipped over you.
It's extremely brief. Very brief. I was just going to, you know, say so day one for me is in the books officially, and it was a great first day. You've heard that we had a meeting with, I sent a meeting with Andrew and Brian and building leadership and had a really excellent discussion. And I think, you know, talking about goals and priorities and MTSS and all the things that we just finished talking about. But a lot of, I think, progress and get the ball rolling. So it was a great first discussion. I also had the opportunity to sit in a couple of team meetings at the elementary level. And it's just very nice for me to be able to meet, you know, see some, some old friends, but meet new ones as well. When there's only five or six of us instead of being in a large group, it allows you to have, obviously have fruitful discussions. So I was really happy to be able to do that today and setting up many more meetings as well. I really think that the tie that Brian made earlier with all the changes that are, that are coming from state, that I think this district in one day, I can honestly say this is committed to supporting and being informative. Sometimes you're inundated with so much new information, it's, it's harder, you know, to then remember we have to go teach all of our students and do a lot of other things. So I think that commitment to communicating and keeping the board updated and all of the work that we're doing, I think is right on track and spot on. And I'm excited to keep learning and hearing from all three buildings. I'll be at the middle school tomorrow. I know there's a faculty meeting. So I'm kind of in that saying hello again and meeting people for the first time phase. But sort of like I said, a great first day, but I enjoy this to be back here. And I look forward to the next summer together. I'm sure I will have more academically rich updates for you. But for one day end, that was, that was a pretty good day. So like I said, short and sweet.
Sounds like it. But were you recruited for the faculty basketball team tomorrow?
Really late. My basketball skills have, have suffered a bit since.
He was a coach.
I know.
An varsity coach?
He was, yes. I could maybe help coach. Get out there playing with you that, nobody would want to see that. Putting yourself.
There you go. Thank you very much.
So we're going to have an ongoing report for Terry on the agenda.
Yes.
Kind of give academic help, because what's more important than the academics of the district?
Absolutely.
Do regular reports.
Yes.
Basketball game, I think the ladies on the board are bringing their pom poms to the back.
There you go. You can't choose the side though. You can't choose the side.
Mike, Johnny, he's our man.
You're in charge of creating the cheers, Muriel. All right, so now we will go to the board committee reports. Did the public library, did you guys meet? You didn't meet, right?
Mine is very short tonight. We had a C-Plaque meeting today, a library meeting. Our new interim library director Hannah Backrock was there, a familiar face, and she was in attendance. Posting has been completed for a new director. We have five applicants so far and will be, they'll be looked at by the administration and interviewed. The ones that have the required certification will be interviewed. Our new, our big front doors on the library have been beautifully refinished and installed. And there's a new marble slab at the entrance, thanks to Andy Davy for overseeing this and Kurt Baransell for the wonderful refinishing job. Those are beautiful doors. The teen room has been expanded with new board games and books included in the expansion. And the many programs which have been offered are being looked at and some different ones added, such as arts and crafts offering that's been requested by people to use the library. We had a presentation from the friends of the library with slides showing the outside of the library. I think in the spring, the front of the library, I think we're planning to clean it up and some of that overgrowth removed and perhaps grass and planters, something easy to take care of will be the no look, but we'll have more on that in the spring. And the next, next meeting is February 11th.
Thanks, Muriel. Do we have a garden club here that could put in like hours of service to clean brush?
I was wondering if that was a, there was an opportunity for community interaction there, but.
Well, we just started talking about this today. And years, we had a, the friends on earth, a beautiful, beautiful postcard. This, of course, you all know, is a Carnegie library. A beautiful postcard of the library with absolutely nothing in front of it except grass and everything. And it was just beautiful. The foundation of that library is just, the stonework is gorgeous. And I think that's, just to make it neat and it's a beautiful building. So we're going to bring the looks of the building back, but you'll be getting, be discussing that more.
Okay.
But we're going to look into kind of getting the stone professionally cleaned because that stone is stunning, more beautiful than any bush could ever look. So if we can get that refinished, I think it's going to look pretty. The stone will be.
So the district's safety committee. Andrew has some notes on that. I, I was in attendance to that committee, but I was in between things. I was just physically present, but it was, it was kind of, yeah, so Andrew has more on that.
I'm happy to give the update.
Thank you.
So we had, we had our first district level safety committee. We have a fantastic group of stakeholders from all of our buildings. We had several different law enforcement representatives there. We had our, you know, we're very fortunate to be able to consult with a couple of different groups. That's Questar and also Needham, Needham as well. So they were in attendance, so it was a really great group. So we talked about many different things. I'm just going to go over a couple, a couple highlights. Our, we decided we are really looking into our relocation sites and our administrative team and myself went to visit those and Andy Davy went to visit those last week. We visited four different sites throughout the community and we're really making more specific plans of what a relocation would look like and how exactly that would work. So we talked about that at our committee. We also talked about some of the new, the new state regulations on parent notification for emergency drills. So now it is New York State's really regulation that families are notified anytime we do a relocation drill with more specific information. So we talked about that new notification and we're already doing that as a district now. We have, we have now, every single teacher has the ability to call an all-call in case of emergency from their classroom phone. So that way, if there was ever anything seen or anyone needed to make call an all-call, they have the ability to do so in case, you know, because it might not be the front office that sees an emergency, it could be somebody from the back of the building. So every single teacher has the ability to do that now. So that was updated. We talked about the building level safety committees and how, how there's going to be at least four a year per building. Every building has their own committee. Then our, our principals then gave an update on those in the district. We also talked about some other projects that we are currently working on is we're, we're building threat assessment teams through every, every single building and district wide. So what that means, if there's ever a threat to the safety of anyone in our school, there would be a team that would come together and really take a look at that threat and also how we can support that student and document that threat made by that student. And that committee would consist of stakeholders from around the district and also law enforcement and also maybe possibly mental health providers throughout the region as well. So we can really provide that approach to support kids. We also, we mentioned and we're, I'm working with our mental health team, which consists of all of our school psychologists, guidance counselors and social workers on the suicide prevention program. So that is also in the works district wide. We'll be doing some training in February on some mental health, suicide intervention pieces, you know, what warning signs are and how every single staff member has to be aware of that. We also talked about updating our emergency protocol for the district. So that's something that we are also doing. There was some new guidance that was, that was brought out from New York State about that and some terminology changes. So for example, you might have heard the terms lockout and lockdown. They're really confusing, aren't they? And, and, and everyone gets confused when you hear that word lockdown or lockout, you get confused what it is. So the state, these are language, this is language that came from New York State. We don't have an option on what we call them. But New York State just recently made an update to call it a secure lockout, which But New York State just recently made an update to call it a secure lockout, which that means you're securing the building. Get inside and lock outside doors, so that means there's a threat outside of the building. Where a lockdown means there's a threat inside the building. So adding that, so lockdown means there's a threat inside the building.
Okay.
Okay, lock, a lockout, secure, you're securing the building because something's happening. Could be happening at the local banks, it could be happening down the road, or it could be happening in front of your school, right? So we're gonna, this new terminology and this new guidance will help support that. So that will be going into effect, these new protocols and new procedures will be going into effect this summer.
There's a note that I had.
Okay. That's it. Any questions?
We haven't done simulation before, right, for lockdown?
So yes, we have a simulate, a practice this year?
Where you have a simulated threat actor.
You're not allowed to do that by New York.
That's not a, not New York?
No, it's actually against the regulation.
Okay.
You're not allowed to simulate that. A lot of these laws came into place because there was a movement actually to get rid of lockdowns and get rid of drills in schools. So that's why the term, that's why we have to do notification. So one of the regulations says you cannot simulate, you cannot, you cannot do that, because what families were reporting, that there was some students were experiencing some trauma with some of those activities. So we have to make it very simple, very announced, and very quick.
Okay, so finance committee. Just a budget calendar? Okay, that's good. And wellness committee?
So we have not met yet, but I want to give an update on that, because I did attend a wellness coordinator training at Questar. One thing that, that we're finding is a lot of people that have these wellness committees in other districts really only are focusing on, I thought was interesting, on staff and faculty wellness rather than student wellness. So what we're going to do here in Chatham is we're gonna do both. It's gonna be, the committee's gonna consist of a combination of student wellness and faculty staff wellness. So we, we have, Linda is our board representative, and we have several teacher representatives. I'm gonna be sending an email out, looking for any people that are interested, community members that are interested. I think that's the fairest way to do it, to open it up to anybody, to see if anyone's interested. So we're gonna be building that, and then we're also looking for an administrator other than myself to be representative on it. And as soon as that happens, we'll be scheduling our meetings and we'll be starting this group.
Sounds great. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Well, comment, we actually had a grant-funded director for that initiative five, six years ago. And I'm wondering if there's any materials saved from that period of time that might be useful. I don't know if anyone raised that to your attention.
No, I could do, no, I could do a deeper dig. I haven't come across anything from them. I can do a deeper dig and have Deb help me look.
There was a, there was a board report which wasn't great in terms of depth of information, but I'm wondering if there's maybe some other stuff hanging around.
My, my goal is after this year to figure out some sort of mechanism to have someone else coordinating the group rather than meeting as a superintendent. You know, it's not common for superintendent to run that, but my thought was to get it up and running and then look for a way to figure out something for a coordinator of wellness. Looking to see who's interested. There would have to be some sort of reimbursement as well, you know, if that was the case. I'm assuming that was unpaid for like a stipend or something.
No, we, we had a, she was grant-funded full-time director.
Full-time director.
It makes results, but it, but it was an interesting experiment.
Okay.
There were some really positive results.
I guess so.
And then there were some not so easy to, you know, to value.
Okay.
Results, but. Mike, you remember that time, right? You don't remember that? She was in there for two years, I thought. I don't remember her anymore. I could go look it up, but she was, she did yoga classes, she was trying to support coaching of the individual teachers. No, no. Yeah. And if we had to do it over again, I'm not sure I would have spent the money that way, but, but there may be something left that's Chatham-specific.
I hope there is. I hope there is.
No, 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 no.
But meeting will be coming soon.
Okay, so back to old business. We're having the second reading of our policy 1510 that we have. We are A reinstated and then have made a couple of changes to. So we can, go ahead.
I keep forgetting. I apologize. So this is regarding on page three, under the public expressions at meetings, the language in the third to last paragraph, due to the possibility of distractibility or disruptiveness, visual and or audio aids. Aids are not allowed during the public comment period unless specifically approved beforehand by the Board of Education. And that was the language that we added to this and was recommended by our district attorney.
I feel generally good with that language, but I'm a little concerned that it, and I know we're about to adopt it, and that's fine. I feel like if someone's circulating something written on paper and they want to put it into public record, that it's our job to take that and put it into public record? But that's not exactly the same thing.
Yeah, I don't think that's visually distracting.
Okay. And then I, I noticed the thing on the fir-, on the, maybe the first page, are we actually notifying the newspapers when we schedule special meetings and stuff? Or like, is that, or they just know to look at our websites? I know we sometimes notify the press when there's a thing going on, but it says here that we do that.
Hey, we just need to ask our, our board clerk.
Yeah, I guess like if that's actually happening or not. I mean, it's broadcast now on, digitally updated on our webpage and our.
I'm not concerned. But it occurred to me that I don't actually know the answer.
Yeah, I don't know if that's happening either.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions? Can I have a motion? Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we're gonna move on to consensus agenda. Okay, can, I have a motion to accept consensus agenda K through M. Be resolved, the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda K through M as written. Motion? Take it. Anybody have any questions?
Comment?
Okay.
We have a kind donation for the public library.
Yes.
Jerome and Marlene Brody Foundation, so special thanks to them.
Definitely special thanks to them. Yes, the Jerome and Marlene Brody Foundation, and the amount of $2,000 for the Chatham Public Library. Thank you very, very much. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved.
Terry, you wanna circulate that sheet for us now?
Do we have any items for future agenda?
I would like to just officially, if we can have a consensus, to put a presentation for MTSS on the future agenda docket.
Very good.
Yes.
Yep.
Are we a part of one agreement?
Yes. Did you guys hear what she said?
Oh, yeah, I, I'm in favor of an MTSS presentation as soon as we feel like we know enough to present.
Right, so it would be spring.
Just, yeah, so just add it to the future agenda when you have it.
Okay. Yep, that's excellent.
Yes. About the. Picture.
Future agenda.
Future agenda item on MTSS, or on MTSS presentation.
Passing that around this line. And then now we can move on to, oh, do we have to do an actual motion to have that included on future agenda? Is that how it's done? We just add it? Okay. Okay, no, we're all.
No, I'm, I'm super interested in that, actually, but I just know we, we don't know enough right now.
We're not, you know, we're using same regulation, but we have to create it ourselves.
Okay, so now we are at the second public comment period. This is for any items related to the agenda, anything that's related to this meeting. If anybody would like to come up and speak about that, they're welcome to.
Oh, yeah, please come.
I just wanted to state that two, at least two of my children, maybe three, were lucky enough to have Terry as a teacher. I was lucky enough to work with Terry as a teacher, both as a colleague, and he was the leader of when I was teacher leader, and I'm thrilled to have him back in Chatham, and I welcome him.
So we do see a need to enter into an executive session, so, and we don't anticipate coming back out of that to open meeting. So can I have a motion? So it's the motion to enter into executive session? Okay, can I have a motion? And we'll get the picture before that, okay? Okay. It was Dawn?
Should the motion? Yeah.
Should we break first before we?
Yeah, so we'll do a quick break, and then we, then we'll appoint the district pro temp, right? That's how we should do that. Okay.